Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of May 23rd here in the townhouse. And I will remind everybody that the meeting is being both broadcast and recorded. First order of business this evening is the consent calendar on which our town accounts warrant minutes from the 9th and the 10th. Our proclamation for Chris Rayland that we read at his retirement party. Gift acceptance, $2,500 from the Boston Foundation for the Nani gift account. One day special licenses, the Concord Country Club, July 7th, 18th to 19th, August 2nd and 3rd, August 9th, September 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th to 9th, September 20th, and November 1st, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 246 Old Road to Nine Acre Corner, all alcohol. Saltbox Farm, 6:21, 6 to 9:00 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt, Elizabeth Cannon, June 5th, and 3 to 6:00 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt. Concord Academy, June 7th and 8th, from 4 to 11:00 p.m., 166 Main Street, wine and malt. AMC Bike Club, June 8th, from 3 to 7:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, wine and malt. Arrow Farm, June 14th, 5 to 7:00 p.m., 11 Wheeler Road, wine and malt. Concord Museum, June 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 246 Old Road to Nine Acre Corner, all alcohol. The Rotary Club of Concord, June 8th, excuse me, it's a rain date of June 9th, 1 to 7:00 p.m., 58 Main Street, wine and malt. Extension of hours of Saltbox Kitchen on June 8th, 10:00 p.m. last call at 9:30 at 84 Commonwealth Avenue. Sunday entertainment license, 51 Walden, June 9th, from 2 to 5:00 p.m., 51 Walden Theater. And tour guide license renewals, as well as Rotary Club special Sunday entertainment license on June 9th, 1 to 7:00 p.m. at 58 Main Street for the Jazz Fest. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I thought I said that. If I didn't, I'll say it again.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read. There's two items that I need to, just to be safe, recuse myself on the two Rotary Clubs because I'm a direct to Jazz Fest.
All right. Then what we will do is we will remove, we will remove those from the consent agenda. So, and then we will vote on the remaining items, and then we will take those two items up separately.
And I have one question on the gift acceptance. Can anybody explain what this money is for?
It's Nani is the town's sister city of Nani, Japan. And these contributions, they try to arrange contributions every year in order to be able to sustain that activity of our band members going there, their band members coming here, sometimes a delegation, IPN, and others in town.
So the Boston Foundation contributes. That's very nice, okay.
Okay, so as amended then, are we ready to vote on the consent agenda? All is all in favor?
Aye.
And then we have two Sunday entertainment licenses for 51 Walden Street on June 9th, from 2 to 5:00 p.m., 51 Walden Street, the theater, and Rotary Club of Concord, June 9th, from 1 to 7:00 p.m. That's going to be a busy day. 58 Main Street, the Jazz Fest. Is there a second for those two items?
I think you need to, the other Rotary Club.
It's a two Rotary, two Rotary.
I'm sorry. No, that's just my fault. So it's just the two Rotary Clubs?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then we are voting on the one day special license for the Rotary Club, June 8th, with a rain date of the 9th, from 1 to 7, at 58 Main Street, wine and malt. And the Sunday entertainment license, Rotary Club of Concord, June 9th, from 1 to 7:00 p.m. at 58 Main Street. Is there a second for that?
Second. Move it first. You move to approve as read.
Is that what you?
Yeah, I move to approve as read, yes.
Now you can say it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Hottges?
Aye.
That's four to one, approval with one abstention.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Linda Escobedo?
Aye.
So I note five in favor, zero opposed. All right, approval of executive committee minutes is the next item on the agenda. Now we'll go back and have another motion on the minutes for April 22nd.
Okay. I move to approve the executive session minutes of April 22nd, 2019, not to be released.
These are the ones that we reviewed and approved in executive session on Monday. Is there a second?
Second. I move to approve the executive session minutes of April 22nd, 2019, not to be released.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hottges?
Abstained.
Second?
Mr. Lawson? Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Myself, Linda Escobedo?
Aye.
I wasn't here, so.
So you have a second.
Aye.
So four in favor, one abstention. Motion passes for favor with one abstention.
Okay. I move to approve the executive session minutes of May 6th, 2019, number one, not I move to approve the executive session minutes of May 6th, 2019, number one, not to be released. to be released.
Second?
Second. Aye.
All in favor? Please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Opposed?
Aye.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of May 6th, 2019, number two, not Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hottges?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
to be released. Myself, Linda Escobedo? Second.
Aye.
Okay, and what I've done is forgotten that to approve these minutes requires a roll Noted, is approved. Five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you very much. Next, town manager report. Kate? call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll vote on this one, and then we'll go back and pick up.
I wanted to first thank the members of the Select Board for hosting the wonderful reception
So this is the May 6th, and you'll call the roll.
for Chris Rayland's retirement last week.
Okay.
I could see how much all of the kind words and the heavy attendance meant so much to
So was there a second?
No, it was moved in second, because instead of just voting, our, it's a roll call vote.
him. So it was wonderful to see so many familiar faces and new ones for me. And I also wanted to thank the staff in my office for coordinating the employee send-off
Okay, good. From Ms. Bates?
Aye.
for Chris, which was marathon-themed for his 26 years of excellent and impressive service. We had milestones for every year, and it was quite something, and I really appreciate all the work that went into that. I'll be serving in the role as acting town manager for a time until the new town manager begins in Concord, and it's an honor to do so. I would encourage people to reach out and let me know what, if anything, we can do during this interim period. Chris's email is still up, but you'll get an away message. It is forwarded to my email mailbox. So as you can imagine, I'm getting twice as much emails. So if you could just be patient, my response time isn't as quick as it used to be, but I'm getting there. Regarding general business, last weekend, the Recreation Department hosted a very successful Stowe Street Blocks Party. There were hundreds in attendance. It was a lot of fun. And thank you to the police and fire crews and CPW for helping out with that. CSEC last weekend also hosted the first Sustainable Landscaping Fair. Kate Hanley, who's our Sustainability Director, worked with a number of high school students to create a demo garden, which is available for the public to see at the high school. And that coincided with CSEC's event, which was also very popular. Tuesday evening, we hosted the second White Pond Public Forum, which was very well-attended and led to a great deal of discussion regarding crowd control and swimming regulations and general plans for capital improvements and basic sustainability of pond health. We talked a little bit about Sachin Skolv, Delia Kaye, Natural Resources Director, Ryan Kane, Recreation Director, Ryan Orr, Facilities Director, and I were all in attendance, as was Jane, as our liaison. Today is Public Works Day. To celebrate this, the eighth-grade students from Concord Public Schools went to Concord Public Works, took a tour of that facility, and then took a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. CPW staff also talked to them about sustainability that they could do and the type of work that they do in general and sort of what the Public Works crew does. And they gave out these very neat water bottles, which are pink this year. Last year's were blue, so it was well-attended. The town is starting the annual spring tree planting this coming week. And so Park &amp; Tree will be putting over 40 setback trees into either the Right Way or other public park areas throughout town. The Friends of the Library have set the date of June 1st for their annual book sale, which will be held on the lawn of the main branch from 10:00 to 3:30 on that day. The Facilities Department, under Director Ryan Orr, has completed the renovations to the Natural Resources Office at 141 Kyte Road. And so those folks have moved back in. Due to the leak that they had a couple of weeks ago, the Planning and Land Management Office is still located at 37 Knox Trail, but it hopes to be getting in next week. Planning has received an updated conceptual plan for the 430 Old Bedford Road, revising the number of units from seven down to four. So that was supposed to be discussed at the Planning Board meeting on Wednesday. We'll look for an update from Marcia Razmussen at our staff meeting next week. And some of you may have noticed that the municipal white plant has debuted their online utility billing. They successfully sent out the first cycle of electronic bills last Friday, and they'll be sending the second out in their completion. It's supposed to be by today at the latest, but we will see. It might be closer tomorrow morning. With the new software systems, and business owners have the ability to pay their electric bills in a variety of different ways, including a self-serve Kia or online. And CMLP is working on getting the word out and encouraging people to sign up for the Smart Hub billing online platform. So I'd encourage people to go to CMLP's website and check that out. And we are now in the final stages of developing an ad and a full job description for the town's new telecommunications director that will be working almost exclusively on broadband under CMLP's direction. That's what we have for now.
Kate, I just have a question about the CMLP billing. Is it going to be also, will you be mailed a bill until you sign up online?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Just, it's our initiative to be a little greener if we can, but yes.
Any other questions?
How many people attended the White Pond hearing?
Oh, it was every chair and...
What, in our view, whether?
Nope, I hear them.
And so what is that, like 150 or?
There was probably about 70 in the audience, and, you know, that's kind of a rolling attendance, but very, very well-attended, a lot of great comments. I think people were generally pleased with some of the feedback we had gotten from the first forum. We kind of took that back, revamped some of the rules and some of the guidelines, particularly around guest policies and limitations on the number of guests and users. We just basically encouraged people to be patient with us because this will be the first year. It's a bit of a trial, and that we have to operate under a variety of different rules because we're a public community and it'll be a public park. And so they may not, people may not get to do everything that they once were able to do in past years, but we will, you know, try to endeavor to learn and see what we can do to make sure that, you know, people are still able to use it as they have in the past.
And since you mentioned it, I did have a chance to see the night ride of the Bike Fest as they came into Concord Center and left, and that was terrific.
Great, yeah. Yeah, they did a great job. Yeah.
Any other questions?
How many people attended the White Pond hearing?
Oh, it was every chair and...
What, in our view, whether?
Nope, I hear them.
And so what is that, like 150 or?
There was probably about 70 in the audience, and, you know, that's kind of a rolling attendance, but very, very well-attended, a lot of great comments. I think people were generally pleased with some of the feedback we had gotten from the first forum. We kind of took that back, revamped some of the rules and some of the guidelines, particularly around guest policies and limitations on the number of guests and users. We just basically encouraged people to be patient with us because this will be the first year. It's a bit of a trial, and that we have to operate under a variety of different rules because we're a public community and it'll be a public park. And so they may not, people may not get to do everything that they once were able to do in past years, but we will, you know, try to endeavor to learn and see what we can do to make sure that, you know, people are still able to use it as they have in the past.
And since you mentioned it, I did have a chance to see the night ride of the Bike Fest as they came into Concord Center and left, and that was terrific.
Great, yeah. Yeah, they did a great job. Yeah.
Any other questions? Right next, a few remarks I have, number, first remark is our next Select Board meeting is June 3rd, and at that meeting, we are going to convene at 6 o'clock rather than 7 o'clock. But the first hour of that meeting is going to be devoted to providing the Select Board with update training on the new requirements of the open meeting law. So we've asked our attorneys to be here with us. It's a public meeting, so anybody is welcome to attend, but we will be beginning at 6:00 rather than 7:00, and then we'll pick up our regular business at 7:00 p.m. Kate, thank everyone for Chris's party. That was really quite nice. I would like to call out Alice Kaufman, Carmen Reese, and Tricom Church for the work that they did to launch and make that very successful for us. So thanks to all of them. Update on the new town manager. Linda and I met with Amy Foley, the Director of Human Resources. We have a contract draft now in the hands of Mr. Crane. My expectation is that we will be able, perhaps our June 3rd meeting, to be able to hopefully approve the contract with him, so that's coming along. I spoke to him just earlier this evening, and things are moving along. I anticipate that we'll be able to draw that to a conclusion. And then just, although it was on the consent calendar, I would just point out that on the 9th, while there's many things going on time, it's our third annual Jazz Fest, which we had...
The P.A. But, no, it's the Rain date.
Oh, the Rain date, sorry. It's the third annual one. It's over back Kyte Road parking area over there on this side of the road. It was really very successful. The first year was terrific. The second year was terrific. And I expect this will be really good. So it was really fun. There's a lot of food, there's some crafts, and there's obviously great music, so I encourage everybody to come out. So that's all the remarks I have. The next item of business is new tour guide licenses. I would just say that before we move to take that up, that we want to thank these folks for all the hard work they do on behalf of the town as a guide. And we sometimes have representatives here, but perhaps they were on Monday when we unfortunately had to cancel our meeting because of a wireman break, but we extend our thanks to them. So I would, we advocate to entertain a motion to approve these licenses.
I move to approve the, I guess the tour guide, new tour guide licenses is listed on the memo dated May 17th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next item is new weekend entertainment license for Rapskalian at 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike. Welcome.
Hi, how you doing?
Introduce yourself, tell us your name, where you live.
My name is Peter Daniel, and I'm the owner of Rapskalian.
Hey, welcome. Can you tell us what you are applying to us for?
We're applying for, I guess, a music license. I forget how it's worded on the application, but we're specifically looking at acoustic or small piece, you know, jazz, that kind of thing. We don't have any set plans or schedules, you know, lined up, but we just would like to have the paperwork first or the authority to do it before we come up with a plan. It's just a extra that we may do on weekday nights.
It is a weekday entertainment license?
Correct.
And it is for acoustic only?
Correct, yeah. Some of you may be familiar. I know I've met you there one time, so thank you for coming. We need the customers, thank you. But it's a small place, so, you know, you can't, we did have one charity event. They said they pulled the lights on, I don't know if they did, and being an open book, so I apologize if they didn't, but they did set up in the corner. It was a one-piece, and it was tight even without one person. So, you know, the space doesn't really allow us to do much more than...
Oh, there was a, you provided as part of your application a layout?
Yeah.
Where you will take out some tables and where you would put the music?
Correct, yeah. It's right in the corner.
Okay, so, I note the application was, the one we got for our meeting on Monday, did not have a response from the police chief. Subsequent to that, we got an email from Chief O'Connor.
Chief O'Connor didn't have any issues with it. He said if it does go beyond acoustic in the future, that it comes back to the board for approval. So he recommended just acoustic for now in the area specified on the floor plan provided in the application.
In order for the record, the application is complete?
Yes.
Questions? Chair?
I guess, you mentioned acoustic or small-piece jazz, and with the small-piece jazz, would it have, it wouldn't have any amplification, but would it have any drums?
Exactly. So we, not that I need to give you any history in my prior experience, so we, we have two other locations. At one location, we've had a lot of success with music, and, you know, the neighborhood's been terrific, and the town's been supportive. That's our service location. But the acting location, I've had the opposite response, and it's been tough. So I've learned a lot of my lessons the last four years on those type issues, so I don't want to ever go down that road again. So we're going to be very careful to make sure that, one, like I said earlier, it's a space, it's small, so we can't really do anything. It would be, you know, too in-your-face and too loud to go beyond one person or a drum, that kind of thing. So I don't, you know, I'm saying no crystal ball, but I'm 100% certain that this will always be small and the volume will be controlled.
For the record, the license is going to be explicit that it is for acoustic.
Correct. Yeah, I just don't know. I'm not a musician, so I'm saying like the, I don't think they ever need speakers, you know? So I know in acting, I've had one guy come with like two speakers, and I'm like, why do you need this? You know, so I can't, I just don't want to, you know, well, being a musician and saying the noise of the amplifier or whatever the noise level is, it has to be very soft just because it's a small room, and we already get complaints from diners who...
Speakers would not be permitted.
Okay, that, yeah, that's even easier for me.
Right.
Okay, that's even easier for us then.
Right. So when you say small-piece jazz, do you envision horns or drums or?
No, I don't, I definitely don't think so. And I can, you know, my, you know, Andrew's been terrific, so I can email him, you know, if someone's going to play, I can say, okay, this is the person that's going to play, and just to put it out there, just so he can say, okay, you know, we don't like that, you know, they played a Main Street and they're, they're too loud, or, so we're going to be as transparent as possible, if we do it at all, you know, so.
Henry, you have other comments?
The, in the license, just no amplified or no amplification kind of thing? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Any questions, please?
I move to approve the weekly entertainment license for Rapskalian located at 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike. The hours in which acoustic music is permitted, Monday to Sunday, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., with the understanding that there will be no amplification.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and good luck.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Lena. Appreciate it.
So the next item here is a 7:15 public hearing. The alteration of license premises associated with existing Section 15 retail package straw wine and malt license to remove entire second-floor area and portion of the first floor from existing license premises for Concord Market, such as Seton Lowell Road. So the applicant has requested that this be continued until June 17th. So what we will do is we will open the public hearing, and then if there are any comments, people are free to make them, but then we will continue the public hearing until June 17th. So if I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any comments? Does the public have any comments on this, being a public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until June 17th.
I move to continue the public hearing to June 17th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next order of business is consider request in the honor of 68 Monument Street to waive the town's right of first refusal to purchase property under Mass. General Law, Chapter 61, made by Beth Ellen Fishman, who is a property owner. On June, on last Monday, on May 20th, on a regular meeting, we would have taken this up, and it is likely that we would have waived our right, but I don't know what would have happened, because we can do it. But because we were postponed, the town on our behalf sent a letter to the owner informing her that her application to us for this was not proper. And the purpose of that was one, to inform her of that, but also to keep our right of first refusal alive. I know, Kate, that the town has taken steps to find out whether this is of any interest to the towns of Rapskalian, as what has been done.
Sure. Yep, we reached out to members of the NRC, the land trust, the affordable housing folks to gauge any interest in the property, and we didn't receive any, anyone that would be interested in it. We can't see any municipal use for the property, and although, you know, we appreciate the thought, we, we right now are not in a position to...
It's landlocked, right? It's reserved.
Correct.
All right, so we really have two choices. She was informed that she needs to reapply.
That's correct.
So we could wait until the application comes back to us, or based on what Kate just told us, that is, that there does not appear to be any interest from the NRC, the housing folks, or the land trust, or the town, we could just go ahead and act now, and then we could write to her and tell her there's no need to complete a revised application.
Would it be hide or defer to spare the expense of going through a second application?
Kate, can I just clarify, because there's been some issues with this in the past? Did you have an opportunity to reach out to each of the housing groups?
Well, it wasn't me personally. It was Marcia Razmussen, our Director of Gangland Management, and I believe, yes, that she did, and I'm just trying to locate the email from her that says who she did. She went through the housing groups through the RHSO, and they didn't hear back from anybody about any interest. I do not know for certain if they talked to the Affordable Housing Trust, but again, most things of this nature would be going through the RHSO anyway for development, et cetera, and they have no interest in it.
So does it sound like, from your notes, I'm sorry to pursue this, but I'm just trying to...
Yes, absolutely.
Does it sound like they threw the, they reached out to the housing groups through the RHSO?
That is my impression from this, and that because the 1990 Residential Compound Plant states that there's no further subdivision, coupled with the fact that it is essentially landlocked, it really isn't a viable option for nearly anything except for open space, which led us, from the housing folks to the NRC, Delia had said that the NRC wasn't interested, and then she in turn reached out to the land trust and said, you know, they hadn't taken the issue up formally, but that the Huggins and the Concord Land Trust thought that it's not likely that they would be interested.
It came up?
Yeah.
I think Linda's pointing out, this came up much before, I think with respect to the Droneland.
Correct.
So I think we're just going to be careful in the future that we are clear that all of the housing folks who are supposed to be consulted are working through that group is fine, as long as it's clear that they're contacting...
That is, that's what these statements have said, is that they went through RHSO, but that collectively, they're not interested.
Right, so any other questions or concerns? Okay, you want to...
Okay. I...
So you're essentially, you, we would, if you turned item nine on your motions, it essentially...
Right, no, I would, I would move that the town waives its right of first refusal, refusal to purchase the property under MGLC 61 from Beth Ellen Fishman, property owner. refusal to purchase the property under MGL C61 from Beth Ellen Fishman, property owner, and the property being 68A Monument Street.
So second?
Aye.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I know that passes five to zero.
So as a follow-up to that, we stated it, but I just wanted to be clear, we'll inform Ms. Fishman that she doesn't need to complete the second application.
Okay, we'll do that on our behalf, correct?
Correct.
Ms. LaFleur. Next item is approval of certification relative to the 2019 general obligation bond issue.
Good evening, I'm Carrie LaFleur, the finance director. Next month, actually in a couple of weeks, the town is going to permanently finance $6.4 million worth of capital projects. There are a number of legal requirements that the town has to fulfill in order to be authorized to finance these projects. We have two land purchases that are included in the financing, the Jarrow property, and then some additional funds for the WR Grace settlement that was approved at the special town meeting in December of last year. So when we purchase property, bond council wants to know that during the, the term of the bonds, that the town is either not leasing the property or not intending to sell the property, or if it is, they would like to see a lease, if a lease exists. So when I put this together, I provided you with two certifications, one for each of the properties, saying that at this time, the town doesn't intend to sell or lease the property. However, on the WR Grace property, we do, we do lease for the solar fields and when I put this together, I was thinking that we've already permanently financed the, the largest portion of that property and that bond council had already seen that lease and I was looking at it in terms of just the additional $150,000 that is being borrowed at this time. However, in going back and looking at it, the lease that we have for the solar field came after the purchase or maybe even the idea for that. So this evening, I'm just asking for a certification on the Jarrow property, saying at this time we don't intend to sell or lease the property with the understanding that turning over a portion of the property for affordable housing to a quasi-governmental agency does not count as selling or leasing. So they're not looking at it in those terms. And in lieu of the certification on the Jarrow property, we have provided a copy of the lease for bond council to review, the lease for the solar field. So there's only one certification that's being requested this evening.
And you may be back to us?
I may be, but I don't think so on this particular issue. I will be back in, I'm not sure if it's the June 3rd or June 17th, with the results of, of the bond and note sale. And if there's any additional housekeeping that needs to be attended to, we can do it at that time. I do also want to mention that we went through a rating review, the town's AAA rating was affirmed. I am going to send something out to the acting town manager to send out along to you, but I just wanted to, to make note because a lot of, a lot of times people are asking, especially since the, the school district received a negative outlook on their AAA rating, you know, what is that going to happen to the town as well? And Moody's does identify a decline in reserves, a lack of voter support for large operating or capital needs, or a material increase in debt burden as a, as potential reasons why we may receive a negative outlook at some point in time. I don't think that's necessarily anything to be concerned about, but I do think if we undertake a $90 million school project, that may come at the cost of a negative outlook to the AAA, but I don't, I don't think that is, would be a reason not to move forward with that project.
And just since those who might be watching might not all be aware of what that negative AAA rating would affect?
In terms of interest rates, probably nothing. It, it really depends on what's being sold on the day that you're issuing debt and, no, I would anticipate that if there was any negative impact, it would be negligible.
But even if there's a negative outlook that they do, that doesn't mean that the bond rating changes.
No, the negative outlook is usually for 18, they'll put that on for 18 to 24 months and reevaluate it.
It could continue as a negative outlook without having any effect on the bond rating.
It, it absolutely could, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. So we had in our packet, we do, we had in our packet last time the memorandum from Mr. LaFleur that outlined both the, both of the offerings, but now we have the certificate that we are waiting to approve tonight, which is just the certificate for the Jarrow land.
That's correct.
So if we could have a motion to that effect?
I move to authorize the clerk to sign the certificate of the select board as drafted relative to the 2019 general obligation bond issue specific to the Jarrow property. Is that what you mean?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, and now that passes five to zero.
Carrie, thanks again for your excellent explanation of what the issues were. That was very helpful.
You're welcome.
Right, thank you. Now you return to your second reading. All right, the next item on our, our agenda is review and approve the Affordable Housing Trust Committee charge. Just as quick background for folks who may be listening, this town meeting, a warrant article was passed that we would create a trust that would manage the funds associated with monies that would come in under Article 23, which was $500,000 from free cash currently under the direction of the town manager, and then Articles 25 and 26, which was building permit surcharge, number one, and property transfer tax, number two. Those are, as you recall, go to the legislature for approval and then come back to the town in the subsequent town meeting and then to a general election. I don't know whether we will be in a position to take that to town meeting for either of the two legislating matters, they have to wait, of course, until the legislature does its work. But for the trust, I think the intent and the hope was that we would get this trust committee put together and we would be able to come back to town meeting in 2020 with a proposal. And what we thought would be the best way forward would be to create a short-term committee that would have come back to the select board with recommendations about how this trust committee should be put together. So this that we're voting on tonight and that we had in our packets was the charge for the committee that will report back to us about how this trust, permanent trust committee would be constituted.
And when you, when you say short-term, what's the anticipated timeframe?
Well, I mean, I hope they would be able to complete the work and get back to us as early in the fall as possible so that we would be in a position to get a warrant article put together for, when the warrant opens. I don't specifically, you know. So we had the committee charge, it has representatives from the housing folks, from the trust, the financing trust committee that we put together that helped us, and citizen representatives. So is there any discussion, questions?
I have a game, Sam.
Yes, I'm, go ahead, would you?
I just have a couple suggestions. Under the purpose, I think it was just an omission in the draft, the purpose of the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we just need to have a trust there. And then I just, I had a recommendation that you'll...
Wait a second.
Sorry, okay. Under purpose?
Right, but, right, um, okay, so on the very top, it says, Town of Common Study Committee Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Correct. But under purpose, we just need to repeat it there. Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee?
Okay, so the meaning of it...
Or Trust Fund Study Committee, if that's, if you're, if that's what you're...
Well, I'm just saying these two things say the same thing, because it's all right, confusing, so.
Yep.
So you're saying it should be Affordable Housing Trust Fund Study Committee?
Affordable Housing Trust Committee.
Trust Fund Study Committee.
No, not fund. Oh, trust fund.
Because that's what somebody's...
Yeah, sorry, yeah, okay. And eliminate the word study.
All right. And your second comment?
And my second comment would be to add another item under duties and responsibilities. So if you'll just listen as I read this, because it's a little bit of a long sentence, but, "to review the existing authority and management of funds at the CPC, CHDC, CHA, and Concord Housing Foundation in the creation of the draft bylaw." So I'm pulling that out because there are various fund management in each of those existing, they're, each of those existing groups, and so I'm trying to say that they need to be aware of that as they put together their bylaw.
So duty will be to review all the existing?
Right, and see how it would relate to their bylaw or how they would manage that.
Funds from these groups, as you articulated, would be funds specific to a particular initiative. And the CPC money would be, we're going to try to build a house over there, we need some money. As opposed to the funds that are coming into this trust committee, or general nonencumbered funds, that is, what is done with them is up to the permanent committee to decide, so...
Correct. And the only addition to that, my CPC funds, if there was no project that particular year to be funded, some, as you look at Affordable Housing Trust set up across the state, there are provisions that money for that year, for the 10%, that may not go to a specific project, could go to the trust. So that was one example of wanting them to be aware of what, what the, what other mechanisms exist in town. Right.
And that may or may not...
And how that relates to their bylaw. And, so I may not have...
No, no, I get it.
Yeah. There may be a better way to word this, I'm just recommending. Should I read it again? Yeah.
Amber, you can try to get it?
Right, yeah. "To review the existing authority and management of affordable housing funds at the CPC, CHDC, CHA, and Concord Housing Foundation in the creation of this draft bylaw."
Send it. Can you send it?
Absolutely.
I think it's an excellent suggestion.
I do, too.
Thank you for adding that.
All right, do we have any other comments or suggestions?
There's one typo that I think I corrected. I'm looking at an old draft, it's in Part D4, and the date said 2010, but it was a typo that I think I corrected, right?
All right, so if you have no more comments, I would entertain a motion to approve this committee charge as amended and seated.
So move.
Ooh, fine. Senator?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. And then I will say to folks listening and here in the audience, there's an opportunity, so a green card would be greatly appreciated.
Yep.
My hope for this is that we can move as quickly as possible on this so that we get this committee seated soon so they will be able to hopefully get their work done. Might be difficult to do a lot in the summertime, so...
Well, you can always draft.
So hopefully, so hopefully get some green cards. All right, next item on the agenda is Long Range Plan Update. And I think Andrew has provided you a copy of this. Just as background for folks who may be listening, our meeting, I believe it was May 6th, we reviewed long-range plan material that had been produced by members of the select board. And what we did was we assigned various sections of that to committee members to come back to us with essentially high, medium, and low priorities around various sections in the, in the plan. And this document is a summary of those activities. And so it's for us to sort of decide, I think if we adopt this as the priorities of our action plan, the next thing that we would want to do is begin to hand various items off to members of the board or to develop how we're going to actually do this. We have a head start on one of the items, if you turn on the back of this page, it's fourth by name fiscal planning. And the high priority is one we talked about before, establish a multi-year capital planning process, including all that. That kind of stuff, I will tell you that I have invited the superintendent of schools and Carrie LaFleur, the town manager, and I also invited, perhaps not her backup, from the incoming chair of the finance committee, they had a point of view about this, to come to us and, and talk to us on the 17th. I have also asked Terry, and she has done some work on this, to put together a draft charge essentially for a committee. And I think the, the decision that we will have to make as board after we've heard from all of these folks and input is, do we want to go ahead with the committee? What a fine idea. Or do we want to simply charge and ask the actors that are already in the process of doing this, the town does capital planning, the schools do capital planning, to work together and then come present to the select board, right? Just options that I know are available. So we will have a draft of what a committee charge would look like, Terry's gone through that and laid out some responsibilities and that kind of stuff, and then we'll be able to hear from the town, the schools, and the finance committee. So that's, on here is a high priority, but we already kind of pushed that down, and if we adopt this long-range planning priority set, we would need to develop similar actions for those things that are least on our high priority.
So the only, I didn't hear the town, where there'd be our...
Carrie, Carrie LaFleur.
Okay, she's coming, not representing the finance committee?
No, she's coming representing the town.
Okay, okay.
And Kate will be here to comment on this as well.
Okay, good.
Right, I agree, I think we need both the town and the finance perspective.
I invited Dean Banfield to come, I just haven't heard back from him.
Right, right, but I mean, Carrie is going to be looking at the timing and the bond issues and the, those issues, but Kate and our new town manager, Stephen, would be looking more at which projects are, you know...
Well, Kate, you remember, has already done a lot of work in that area and presented to us a few weeks ago, and we were in the hearing, hearing about municipal buildings.
Correct.
So I was trying to get our arms around all of this so that it's comprehensive and then try to figure out what the best way to get what we think we need. So, but anyway, that was not meant to discuss that item so much as it was to say we need to develop similar approaches, if you will, to the other high priority items.
Right, I would just like to make one comment. I think that, I don't know what the timeframe will be for presenting that material, but I think it would be important to have a sense about that before the middle school feasibility study plan portion of the work is finished. In other words, before we present, either present something at town meeting and, and go to the polls to ask if we end up asking voters to vote for a new school. I think it's important... I think it's important that the place of that project in the whole scheme of things be articulated and explained.
I think you're correct, not only specifically, but in general, one of the requirements of this plan, whomever winds up doing it, is not only costs and needs and benefits, but a timetable. Because I think from the Finance Committee's point of view, I think I'm getting this correctly, the concern was, you know, do we need to spread needed capital expenditures out so that we have a more moderated impact on the tax rate? So timing of all of the projects.
Right, exactly.
What could be postponed, and what couldn't?
And I just bring that up because we're about to nominate this middle school building committee, so clearly that's the one that's going to be on process first. So this sounds like both be ahead on a draft and therefore a...
Right, right. I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to directly address that now, I was raising it as an example, because it'll come up when we talk about our goals for the year.
Well, thank you for moving quickly out of this.
We have to move quickly.
Yes, we do.
We're not going to give it up.
That's right.
And just following up on the staging of this, which, you know, you've obviously given a lot of thought to, I'm wondering if it would be helpful for Kate to just summarize very quickly, just so that the town is individual... And I hear Carrie is representing the town as well, but I think she does represent more process, a little more process in. And just to add to the staging of this...
Well, she could be here.
Yep.
Right there.
Certainly will.
No, but she's already, as you know, she's already done a lot. We have a consultant, a TBA, is that what you mean?
Yes.
That's working with us on that, and bridges timeframe around the consultancy ability or availability, so we need to get cracking.
Do you think the consultants will have any more data by June 17th than we have this meeting, or is that...
I don't think that they will have any more data than what they have now. What they've gathered is basically existing conditions, and we have essentially three options. A is to do nothing, so that's sort of a non-option. B is to renovate in place, and C would be a new municipal or several municipal facilities. And so I have asked if the consultants would be able to come in at July meeting, I believe the 17th was the tentative date, to present you all with an update of our existing conditions and where our shortfalls are, and then sort of where you could go from there.
So we're going to need, we're going to need a little background information, which you can provide.
Correct.
And which Lori can provide, and Carrie, for that matter, will. We don't want that conversation on the 17th to be, we don't need a building, I mean, we don't want to...
You're not going to give that for me.
I know. We don't want to get into sort of trying to make judgments about what we need, that's the purpose of putting this committee here. So we've got a lot of, you know, good information about needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the committee that we're trying to work on. So I didn't need to take so much time on that, but...
I think it is important to...
It is. So other comments, or...
One of the things that I'm hearing from your example is that as we look through, if we adopt these, the next translation stage might be to process each one. Like, in your example is putting together the start of a committee to address this. I could imagine that for many of these high priorities, so I think the sooner we...
Well, correct. I mean, if you go to the top under economic vitality section, point two, the second bullet is to create vitality, so, but here's my, here's my intent, so I don't know what's going to happen. My hope is we just turn each of these items back over to the person responsible for developing that.
I want to let him know, then.
To begin to unbundle this. You know, I think that's the next step, and I'm giving it back to the people who developed it, makes the most sense to me. So that, just so you know. All right, any more comments or questions about this?
I'm looking at the very first one about the economic vitality officer, if fiscally possible. We want to say, or maybe that's in the next step, how are we going to determine what that means, fiscally possible?
Well, you might or might not recall that we had in, Chris had in his preliminary budget that he presented, I think, at the first Finance Committee engagement, I don't remember exactly when that was, but as the first step in establishing guidelines, Chris came and talked about. And he had in that, I think it was called an economic development officer.
Right, coordinator.
Coordinator. So that was in the budget last time, but in the process of getting the town's budget into the side of the guideline in the Finance Committee, that was something we couldn't afford.
Okay.
So the way forward with this might be to come up with a notion that we're going to lobby the Finance Committee and encourage the town manager to put this back in their budget.
Right. And I'm also thinking that maybe we look at alternative financing somehow, I don't know what that might be, but like, half is from the budget, half is from grants, the business community, I don't know. But that, think that in the box, you mean is to hire this individual?
Yeah, because it's...
That's exactly the job that's going to be assigned to, in this case, Susan. But that's exactly the point. I mean, take that, unbundle it, turn it into something we can act on, and get it back to us so we can try to move forward on it.
Can I ask just a silly question? Why do we call it an officer? That's just a, it's a, it's a...
Oh, I don't know.
It's just a name that sometimes connotes a specific type of role versus a...
Or coordinate.
I'm totally flexible on how I want to do the wording of that title. It was just person that goes...
I just wasn't sure whether there was a charm apart associated with it.
No.
I also want to say that I think I had the easiest job here, because everybody seems to be in agreement so far, and I mistakenly wrote up the charge.
So we'll make sure, we'll make sure to even out the love.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I am volunteering if one of you guys needs, if you want to take a section of yours that you don't know what to... All right, I will help you, Susan, I'm perfectly happy to work on this.
Thank you.
I would like us to approve this, though, because I'd like it on the website, and I'd like it made available to other standing committees in town, so that we, you know, we don't bump into each other, or one of the other planner, or NRC, or Public Works, or somebody that's working on this, we can get together.
Yes, great. Coordination.
Yeah, coordinate, that's what it's called.
So with that in mind, are you going to slightly change the title then, so when the people see the link?
So what should I change it to?
Select Board Priorities from the Long Range Plan.
Yeah, right, Select Board Priorities. For 2019, 2020.
No, no, these are not, these are out of the Long Range Plan.
Right, they don't have a date.
They're not our goals for the year.
Okay.
So Select Board Plans for...
Select Board Priorities.
Priorities for Long Range, the Long Range Plan and Vision Carpet.
We're going to change officer, if you need to.
Okay, let's do that while I've got it.
Can I ask you another question?
Of course.
On the Cross Town Connect. I'm really happy to see that in this draft, that was not...
You asked me to put it in.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah. And so it says more effectively work with Cross Town Connect, maybe, are you already working with them?
Yeah.
We started?
We have.
Okay, great, so I need to get caught up on what we're doing, sorry, but so...
Yeah, and I will say that in drafting this document, many of you had lots of additional remarks around it, but I was trying to get it into nut, into kind of bollity kind of things, so there's a lot of background, so should we... All right, any other comments? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Select Board's priorities for the Long Range Plan and Vision Carpet as amended and seated.
Second?
No, so moved.
So moved, sorry, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I know the cost is five to zero. Thank you. The next, review and approve the Select Board meetings schedule. I don't know if that is, I did not bring my wish made, you provided it.
Why don't you do, ours goes only till July 1 on this?
Right, so the next one in the packet is July 1 to June 30. So I know that Terry, you had said that there's an August meeting that was on the draft.
August 12th.
I had suggested that we cancel the August. We usually cancel one of the August meetings, and Carrie had let me know that she was not available on the 12th, and I heard nothing.
And so that calendar is just the regular meetings, there's no public here, and that's still up to, you know, decision for the town meeting.
I won't be here on 26th, August. I know, so...
So do we want to approve it?
And, you know, I'm sure there'll be other ones that could get added, you know, changed around, but just to want to get that onto the website, so...
All right, I didn't change my thing, then.
I move to approve the 2019-2020 Board Regular Meeting Schedule with the amendment of canceling August 12th.
Do you want to actually just hold off on canceling one of the August meetings until we get closer, keep them both posted as options, or...
Probably we should.
Yeah.
Okay. And just with the, with the...
With the idea.
The expectation that one of them would be canceled, and then typically, I think in...
Okay. So I'll change what I just said and say, I move to approve the 2019-2020 Board Regular Meeting Schedule as drafted. Second.
Discussion? I would, Terry?
Aye.
Opposed? Our cost is five to zero. Let me say, before we move on to the other one, that we, one of the things we'll need to do, and it's going to be tricky this year, is we need to set the date for town meeting. And it is, it is tricky, because the first week in April, Monday is the 6th, if I'm not wrong, 8th is the beginning of Passover, so that gets to be a little tricky. The next week, we have already heard from an organization in town that has their annual event, which attracts hundreds of people, many of whom would be at town meeting, that there's a conflict on the 14th, which is the following Wednesday, and they have asked us not to schedule town meeting on, I guess would be the 12th through the 15th. There, the week after that is Patriots Day and school vacation.
Right.
So we're either, we're either going to have to do it in conflict with an event in town, I don't think we can do it with Passover starting on Wednesday.
Well, what you could do is meet Monday and Tuesday one week, then adjourn to the next week, do Monday and Tuesday.
That requires to take down everything, or everything back up again. High school would go ballistic.
Yeah.
Plus the cost is a lot of money. So we're either going to probably wind up, unless we just do it in conflict with that event on the 14th, the last week in March.
Wow.
Or sort of the last week in April, and neither one's very attractive, I mean, it's late.
So if we did it early, how does that affect the warrant? That's what I'm trying to imagine, or everybody's...
Well, we have to roll, but it doesn't probably too much affect the warrant, what it probably does is compress the public hearings.
Hearing schedule. I was just thinking about some of the large ticket potential...
I think we did that maybe two or three years ago, we had a very long town meeting, I think it was April 1st or April 2nd or something.
It snowed on one of the...
Yeah, I was on the Finance Committee, I remember your opinions, super rushed to get their report out.
So why don't, why don't Kate and I sit down and go over some options and try to get it back, but I think we'd better get on with this.
About later.
Well, let's lay out the options, and, you know, people have, you know, I remember when we did it early, the concern Chris had was, the finance folks would be able to put their financial reports together and give people a chance to read them.
Yeah.
So let's...
And I think the Planning Board is anticipating some perhaps additional or well, around potential amendments, and they're expecting public forums. Yeah, so I...
Yep, so, so...
I think we also need to keep in mind just the internal, the way that the budgets get up is that each division manager and department head meets with the town manager, myself, and the Finance Department.
And this is his first year.
Correct, so if we were going to be going for end of March, that would realistically really need to happen right around Thanksgiving, 1st of December, which would mean that we would start putting budgets together probably June, July, when historically we've done capital in August.
Yeah. All right, so let's get together and start looking at this, because it's...
That certainly is something interesting to come into, for the new town manager.
Right. Next, review and approval of the 2019-2020 Select Board Goals, so we want to draft that as well. Just note to carry over that this is where you see the same thing of creating a new board for the capital planning and the water. So comments, questions?
Clearly, you know, we've been making incredible progress on our sustainability goals, and the only question I had is whether it was necessary to reiterate number seven, because we have six there. Which section, under, I'm sorry, under balance equity and diversity?
There's two in the middle.
Changes of Port Sustainability Director.
Right. And those, all the committees involved with that are very strong committees, and...
Well, I don't know that seven differs from six, only in calling out the Sustainability Director and the Town Manager. So it's really, we have a bunch of them, which we want to continue to work on, that's what six says.
Right.
And then seven says we're going to work with the Town Manager, the Sustainability, and make sure that, so I don't think it's critical.
Yeah. I also noted that, you know, we don't call out other specific positions. In that sense, we try to stay with the principles.
It's your pleasure. Your pleasure is to take it out, seven.
Yeah, because I think we've got strong...
I think that's right.
There's a strong mandate, it comes through either in our warrant articles or...
What's that?
Well, I think that some, since what we've just adopted in terms of our Long Range Plan priorities, two, under Effective Government's Board Organization Communication, two becomes a very, you know, it implies a much larger workload than is articulated there.
Right.
Yet we're not ready to call out specific actions the way we have in the past. And as you said, you know, the committee formation, hyper, you know, just use as a example, in previous years, we've had those committee, you know, the specific action listed in the protocols. This, number two... I feel like we could better write that to capture what we just...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's decided.
All right, you're in charge of rewriting number two.
And number three there, seating.
Same section?
Right, seating the middle school building committee, the nuclear metals reuse committee. And do you want to add the committee, or that we just did tonight, the Affordable And do you want to add the committee or that we just did tonight, the affordable housing task, funding trust.
Trust fund.
Trust fund.
Right, trust fund committee, yeah, it is a specific committee we're trying to...
Yeah, and that's been determined.
Yes.
So let's slide, you're in charge of the language there.
Okay.
And then we'll put that, we'll put that as item number four, not after the other committees, or just list it with three?
I think it could be with three.
Just list it with three, okay, fine.
And then number seven there, what, it says complete the public-private partnership task with the Concord Library. What needs to be done with that? I've seen my flat looking.
The upshot was that we had decided as a board, I was not at the board meeting, that we would put together a public-private partnership group to work with the library. And I think it will focus around, the town has an agreement with the library that I think would serve as a basis for review. So we need to get with the trustees of the library and get people on a public-private partnership from our side, then to begin meeting together to review the agreement between the public library and the town. Agreement is like very old and hasn't been revised.
Oh, nice.
So the agreement is with the corporation.
Corporation trustees.
So that word is missing from here, so maybe...
The Concord Library Corporation.
Yeah.
Okay, so I had corporation. And I think it, when did you say it was last?
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine, it's a very...
Needs to be updated.
Yeah, needs to be updated, and that's consistent with what the public-private partnership committee was telling us, that we should review these on a regular basis, supposedly for their formal agreements.
Okay, so instead of saying complete the task, we probably should say review the, review and update the agreement.
Existing agreement.
Right, with the library corporation.
I understand the point, I get it, but I want to call out it as a consequence in the public-private partnership committee because that, to them, they're telling us to do this. So...
So are we going to do this, the final goals on June 3rd with obvious multiple changes?
I think so. I think, I don't have any problem, we could post the draft.
Yep.
Because not going to be profoundly changing anything. So I don't have any problem posting the draft of it, once I've skidded on the agenda.
Okay, this last one.
We'll have affordable housing. General provides some language for number two. We'll strike number seven on balance equity and diversity.
I have a couple other questions on it. Like you said, I'm not sure exactly what you said about the capital planning, did you say that is incorporated in here?
Well, number three under fiscal point.
I thought it was.
Right, I'm looking at number three and I'm trying to see if that's what you meant.
You did word that way, I did because we, we don't know exactly what we're going to do yet.
Correct.
So I didn't want to come down on one side of the number of that and tell the other chance to hear from Kate, Carrie, and Superintendent Hunter about this. So it was more effective long-run method for understanding the capital facilities needs of the town.
Okay, I like the develop a more effective long-run method, maybe we could just change understanding to prioritizing or discussing and prioritizing or something.
Well, I think we could stick the word, instead of method, just stick the word plan in there.
Yeah, okay.
Plan for doing this. And then the details of the plan would be, you know, some of the stuff that you had provided. Okay, we'll make that change with you. All right, so...
Sorry, my very last question, regional stake interests. And number two, can we have a lot of organizations listed, can we add cross-town connect?
I don't see why it can't.
That's fine, I was just imagining that, yeah, it's continuous.
My last question is why we're calling out the MNA fiscal policy committee?
Because I'm a member of it.
That's what I thought you were going to say, all right, excellent.
It's not me being a member, but if you have a representative, you would want me to do something.
Yes, you do, okay, excellent.
I'm reading that from the Tuesday. All right, okay?
Good.
All right, so we don't need to approve this, but Andrew, I'd like this posted on the website, making sure the draft, perhaps a little bit more comment would...
Yeah, I did that at the last second.
Public comments?
Susannah K., Esther Road, is it possible to have public comments after the committee liaison reports?
I'd like to have done, is there a particular issue?
We would too, but we'd still love to hear the committee liaison reports, we may have something to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your recommendation.
Any other public comments, if only a little? Okay, no other?
I have been to two planning committee, planning board meetings, one on May 7th and then one this week on Tuesday, and they, on May 7th, they were actively soliciting input from stakeholders in the community about potential changes to zoning regulations that might make it easier for affordable housing to be built. They didn't hear, I thought that the, there weren't very many people there to do that, to give them that input, but they, what their goal is over the course of the year is to identify three, four, five specific things that they'd like to get input from and perhaps move some of them at town meeting. And broadly speaking, they've talked about perhaps easing the restrictions on accessory dwellings, looking at density in areas of town that are X distance from the two train stations, and maybe changing the zoning so that could be more dense housing. They talked about PRDs, PRDs that are within that kind of area, close to the town versus PRDs that were further away, and if there might be different criteria. Then Tuesday night, they did talk about, there was a presentation that Kate mentioned for 4:30 Bedford Road, which was changed from seven units to four, and they presented a conceptual design, there was no, just to get feedback before they went and did all the engineering and the, you know, spent all the money in order to do a formal presentation. So that's their, that's where, they're spending most of their time trying to get information and make some concrete moves to help enable affordable housing efforts through zoning.
Are they far enough along in their thinking that it would be helpful to have them come talk to us?
I'm not sure they're there quite yet. Marshall was at the meeting on Tuesday, and she gave them some guidance on, you know, what would be required in terms of educating the community, getting the community input and getting feedback for changes such as this. So I don't think they're quite there yet. Other thing about planning is they do need another member, so anybody out there that would like to be on the planning board.
Is there, is there any skill that they'll...
Yes, well, the person who just rotated off was a real estate person, no, I'm sorry, a developer. So it could be real estate development, a real estate person, someone with specific urban or suburban planning skill. So if anyone out there would like to submit a green card, they're looking for a member.
I just put the request into Lori, the receptionist, to send planning the list of all the people that submitted for the planning board this afternoon, so they should have that Nancy asked for.
I'm very interested in having the planning board come talk to us so we could really in detail understand.
And I think, but they're still, they're still trying to get their hands around how this might look, but it might be good for them to come earlier because we could have...
Well, I'll ask them, see what makes sense to them.
Yeah.
We've got a lot going on, affordable housing, and I think we'd want to try to keep it, you know, coordinated.
Yes. On May 8th, this wasn't on my list, but I went and sort of joined to the West Concord Advisory Open House, which was really, there was a lot of really good information there on traffic, on the development of 1440 Main Street, and a variety of other activities in West Concord. On the 5th, I, oh, excuse me, the 15th, I attended the Personnel Board. They're wanting to take on a task, which I think is great because we've talked about it when I was on Personnel Board for years, of looking at the function of the Personnel Board, which was established before there was an HR department. So the duties have changed over the years, but they're going to be looking at how other towns, what other functions Personnel Board serve in towns that have one and also have an HR department. One of the concerns was that there'd be, the one thing that jumps out that Amy thinks is very, it is very important, Personnel Board, just to remind you, represents the non-union employees in the town, so nothing to do with the school employees or the fire police, et cetera. If there's a grievance, the union employees have a process, but the non-union employees don't have a process, but we think there's another way to do it rather than keep, if that's the most important thing, there may be another way to achieve that without Personnel Board. Because a lot of, well, there's a lot of tasks that are kind of duplicate, so they're going to look at that this year, that's the...
So is there a thought that they're going to phase themselves out?
I, I, well, I don't know, because it's, you know, this is, it's a, looking at it, and one of the things that came up when it comes up every year is, you know, when we look at a town and whether it's a good use of town meeting to be going through all of the classifications of personnel, in the school budget, they present the budget, you do have the background so you can see sort of what's, what's personnel, what's material, you know, the broad categories, but because of the bylaw, it's because of the bylaw, so there may be tweaking there to have citizens have access to the information, but not necessarily have to present that level of detail at town meeting. That's an example.
So it could just be part of the budget.
Yeah, but it can't right now because of the way it's...
Right, and I think what's really unique about Concord is that we have a very, very strong charter with a strong town manager. The Personnel Board in some other towns is more active because there's a weaker town manager or a town administrator, so I think it's good they're looking at it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up that Concord's charter, not just about the strong town manager for the government, but we, many, Massachusetts is an employment-at-will state, but the provisions of our bylaw have cause protection for our employees, so regardless of whether they're in the union, the main role of Personnel Board amongst other things is to be that balance so that if someone were terminated or disciplined for cause, and there's difference, a legal definition between cause and just cause, but if they were disciplined or terminated or somehow grieved by cause, that they are able to appeal that decision up to the town manager, if the town manager holds a hearing and they are still dissatisfied, they can appeal that to the Personnel Board. What's tricky is that, this contradictory language, because should the Personnel Board disagree with the town manager's decision, they would make an advisory recommendation back to the town manager, he or she can either choose to take that advice or not.
Right.
And that's where the sticky wicket is.
Right, well, during the nine years of our own Personnel Board, this came up twice.
Correct.
And it was both, you know, one in my third year and one, you know, four years later, and both related to terminations, so it's not a frequent happening, and there may be another way, like members of specific other boards that convene around this as needed.
When needed, as opposed to standing.
Right, right, and that's, I mean, that's one of the things they're thinking about.
Concord is only one of three communities out of the 386 that has cause protection, so it's very unique and interesting. And it's, it's a, it's a nice thing for the employees to be able to know that there's a process, and so you essentially are afforded the opportunity for some type of due process.
And that, that helps with, you know, supporting employees. Okay, I went to Sustainable Gardening Fair too, and it was fantastic, and also went to Concord Can where there was a presentation on Zero, yeah, a lot of, in that Zero School, only two select people though. It was a good presentation on that, and that's it, that's fine.
I also attended the West Concord Advisory Open House, and it was interesting, the bridge over connecting Bakerath, Economic Park, came up by several people, so that was good. Susan, I wanted to ask you, but I didn't want to interrupt you, for the planning board, when you say affordable housing, you're talking about a range of affordable housing as opposed to...
Right, exactly.
Housing. I think we have to, to the extent possible, we should all try to make that distinction when we're talking about it, because it's an education process for the public, subsidized affordable housing versus a range of affordable housing.
Right, okay. Because we're affordability in housing.
Yeah, a range of affordability, because we're concerned about both extremes.
Right, and sometimes we use the term Concord affordable, which doesn't help either because that's another level.
As we speak, there's a HATS meeting tonight, and the only reason I, and obviously I'm not there, but the only reason I'm mentioning it is because they're focusing on micro-mobility, which is transportation issue, and implementing complete streets effectively, also transportation. Their meetings are typically videotaped, so I just want to mention it for people who are zeroing in on this topic, that they have the opportunity to check that video out. I also attended the recent meeting of the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and I, they always have potential projects that are in their queue, and I think they were already contemplating, you know, how they might approach the town manager with select board approval on the money that was appropriated for affordable housing at the recent town meeting. And that committee is looking for a member, so I want to mention that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Any updates on the tax credit for Johnson and Rich?
No.
I don't know what time it is, I'm just saying that. In July.
Yeah, by the end of summer, we're hoping to know where we are on that. The, we talked about, well, we haven't talked about that tonight, the nuclear metal star reuse planning committee, we're going to be nominating some committee members this evening for that committee, but I just want to mention that that committee is still looking for two additional members, and if, we're looking for people in land management and land development in particular, that would be helpful on that committee. And then, that completes my report.
Thank you. Terry?
I attended the public works meeting and Steve is the new chair. The water rates are going up 5% and the sewer rate's up 1% this year. And the new billing system, as we talked about before, is going to include water and super now. And I also attended the event that Kate talked about today for Public Works Week, that It was very well organized, very interesting seeing the wastewater treatment plant, the equipment down those, et cetera. I went to the West Concord Junction Cultural Council. There was a woman there named Jennifer Schuneman who was starting a quarterly magazine. This is, the cover's going to look something like this to attract tourists. This is something that really ties in with our, with the long-range plan and the economic.
It's a privately.
Yeah. So I have her email and all her contact information. I was thrilled to see that she wants to start this magazine. She already has businesses who have contributed and want ads in it. So I'll be happy to share all that information. And there's going to be a porch fest September 21st, which is this new type of festival where people have music on their porches. And then I went to the Compu Commission on Disability. And there is one vacancy now. They're looking for somebody. And there's also a question about two other members. Technically, their term is up. But, yeah, did they write you?
Six, three. This is a, Mary Ellen. I had already said that that seemed like a fine.
Okay.
Background is that people who are leaving a committee, and they've served for two terms, which is what our standard is. But they have such expertise that we're essentially going to propose that we.
Right.
Reappoint.
And also the question is whether they really serve two terms because the name of the committee changed, the charge changed.
At least stagger the terms one, two, three years after that.
That could be on our agenda on the third.
All right, great. That's taken care of.
And this one, yes, I went to the CSEC Committee. And again, oh, and the new chair is Doug Sharp. Is that right? Okay. And the Sustainable Landscaping Fair, it's wonderful. And finally, I went to the Library Board Trustees last night. We had a very interesting presentation from the curator, Leslie Wilson, I think is her name. And she is leaving after 23 years. And everybody, if you want to see this collection, it's unbelievable, including this hand, handbill that they handed out in 1837 of Emerson's original Concord him. They have other original documents, Nathaniel Hall, Arne, Louisa May Alcott. It's really, really excellent.
It's upstairs in the local gallery.
Right. And on June 18th, they're going to have a brainstorming session. The public is encouraged to come and talk about how you want the library of the future to be.
Great. Thank you. Great.
Okay. Well, I attended the NRC last week. And that was a relatively uneventful meeting. We actually did 68A Mining Street was one of the call-out discussion points I made. And they very much determined that there was very little likelihood of having any interest, acknowledging that communities we reapply, if it's going to come formally to them, but, you know, indicated no interest. Then this week was a busy one. We started with the White Pond Forum that Kate mentioned, which was, she's being humbled. That was a real tour de force. You've handled that impressively. And we had a lot of questions, a lot of clear passion. And I think that the message that this is year one's plan, we're getting it moving so that we have a beach to use this summer, and that this is an open process. I watched a lot of people who were not sure about that at the beginning leave comfortable that they had not only been heard, but would have open access to being heard by Ryan Kane or Kate throughout the, throughout the towns. And we don't, we don't even legally have title yet.
No.
No. So throughout the, throughout the process, there's some interesting piece of information, which I suspect if anybody wants to, what website would this be? The Recreation?
Recreation.
Which is not where people are used to looking for White Pond. So White Pond is now in town, like operations, and people should think about going there for any of the regulations. And the beach passes are available also at the Recreation Department.
Correct.
So then Terry and I went to a Regional Gas Leaks Forum. It was co-sponsored by the Town of Arlington and Muggs Upfront, but it was for all of the regional towns. And there's a number, there's a lot of legislation going forward on this, which is interesting and just really tightening up. Obviously, the Columbia Gas Experience changed everybody's perception of this issue. And it was just really interesting to see how much activity exists right now. And Tammy Guevara, our rep, is right in the middle of all of this, which is heartening to see. I want to spend some time with Mike Barrett to figure out what he sees, his role in it. He's not as active on it yet. And clearly, I know that somewhere, and I think it might have been Muggs Upfront in town, has a map of the leaks in town here. And I think it would be useful to take a look at that. I know that we've had two main problems, both Bakerath and on Cambridge Turnpike. While they're not necessarily a leak-caused issue, one of the parallel problems that was discussed at this meeting in general is that there are so many redundant pipes throughout, or gas lines throughout the communities, many of which, while no longer being actively used, are still pressurized. And so they, sometimes they fall off of the blueprints. Right, exactly. And we don't know that they're there. So, and that, so we were very lucky that we didn't have a bigger problem on our hands. And Terry, do you have a few?
Well, yeah, it turns out that it's easier and faster and cheaper for them to put in a new pipe than if they've leaked. So they leave the old pipe there. And now there's kind of a fork in the pipes, and both are there. And nobody knows about it. So the old one's still leaking. The new one's working to some extent.
I can understand from cost, but not, it's a good idea. But from a cost perspective, I wouldn't want to take it. But why it wouldn't be depressurized is beyond me.
Right.
I mean, okay, you don't, you just don't know how to take a mile away.
And they actually are tracking how much they're losing and pricing it into their gas rates, which is really amazing.
What was really amazing to me is when they looked at the mission of the DPU, because this is an agency that was set up, I guess, in the 1800s. And their original mission hasn't really been changed. Their original mission was keep the houses warm and avoid explosions. There was nothing about worrying about leaks or climate change or any of these things. So the whole mission needs to be updated. And that's what this legislation's been helping with.
So under the guise of regional population, more on that to come. And then the, yesterday, I attended the PEG Access Advisory Committee. We actually held it in the green room of the studio at the high school. And, which was certainly fun for me to see because I've never been there before. And it was a, it was a well-attended, like both, some of the members of the public were there. We just, I had a chance to meet our new, the new head of the Minuteman Media Networks, daily operations, Anya, and she's lovely. We had a great catch-up at the end of the meeting. And there was a, you know, we went through the order of business. We discussed the PEG survey, the PEG Access survey that went out. And the results were not large, I think under 10% in terms of responses. And so the benefit is that we're going to go through them individually. The community's going to look through all of them. And there were your basic elections. And as always, the case is, the person not there is now the chair. There is, there is Frank Breen's leaving, so they also have an opening on that committee. There were members of the public there who voiced their concern about the connection of Minuteman Media Network to the town and therefore the potential for there to be overly zealous government engagement in the broadcast or the content.
I, the Pollinator Committee didn't have a forum. And the U. Carver Trust Committee met only, I mean, they met, but then they met, went into executive sessions. So I also attended the School Committee, the School Committee meeting, both regional and the public met together. A lot of business items, and one that directly impacts us is they, and it's on our list of nominations that we're going to nominate a court booth and head about to be the Middle School Building Committee, School Committee Representative. So that's, and as a personal note, only because it's out of order, I want to remind everybody that while I'm talking about the Jazz Fest happening, this Monday is Memorial Day. We have two ceremonies going on on Memorial Day. The first is the Ride Out, starts at the Ride Out Playground at 9:00. There'll be a ceremony there, and then there'll be one right here in the town center at 11:00. And so I encourage folks to attend them. They're usually very nice ceremonies. Don't last too long. Hopefully, we'll get some good weather for that. So we turn now to public comments. If you want to come up.
Suzanne O'Kay, Esther Ruckroad.
Brooks Reed, Mr. Ruckroad.
And I want to thank you very much again for the accommodation to allow us to do this after the committee liaison reports. A quick comment. As a result of your committee liaison reports, one thing that we actually asked to do at that PEG Access Committee, we were the public that was well-attending, and we did record it. The comment was specific about requesting the recording, can be audio only. We don't care of the executive sessions, such that due cause, people can go back once things have been approved over time, if people wish to know how decisions were made. The other question and request we made specifically, which was not mentioned again, but we do have it on record, is we've asked that Minuteman, this PEG Access Group, record those meetings that the Select Board has, when you just meet early on and then go immediately into executive session, when most of the public is not present.
Yeah, we tend not to do that.
Yeah, we've asked that it actually occur, because there actually is a process that needs to be followed.
I think both of those, I, thank you, I think we heard from you once before about recording the executive sessions. And so I heard both of your comments. I think they're best directed at us. The PEG Access records what we ask them to record, as opposed to independently deciding what.
Well, that's sort of, we'd like them to be independent. That's actually part of the issue. But I understand your statement, and I appreciate it.
So I think there's no problem other than the inconvenience of, you know, taping something for a minute before we go into executive session. I don't think there's any reason not to do that whatsoever, as far as I can tell.
That would be appreciated. Would be appreciated.
Executive session, a little more complicated. I think we need to talk about that. But I've heard.
Apropos of my husband's comment, it's going to, we hope, have a discussion with the Attorney General regarding that. But I'll let him.
Regarding, just so I'm clear, regarding.
Regarding accountability with their executive sessions. But I'm going to let my husband drive this.
So as you know, last Thursday, May 16th, we filed our fourth open meeting law complaint against the Concord Select Board. While many of you know that we're defendants in the Esther Ruck lawsuit, we did not file open meeting law complaints as defendants in that suit. Rather, we filed the complaints as taxpayers who have an interest in promoting open town government. Our latest complaint proves that you, our Select Board, violated the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law well over two dozen times, based on dozens of emails sent between Select Board members and facilitated by the former town manager. Massachusetts Open Meeting Law is a law which requires that governing bodies, including town Select Boards, keep their decision-making public when not holding executive session. Select Board is not permitted to have discussions via email, phone, or any other non-public process. Doing so effectively hides the decision-making process for the public and is illegal. Emails provided to us by the town prove the Select Board has repeatedly held illegal email discussions. Some of the violations cited in our complaints involve illegal executive sessions, that is, secret sessions held without disclosing topics of discussion. This results in the public having no knowledge of what was being discussed and is illegal. The Concord Select Board has repeatedly violated the Open Meeting Law by failing to make required disclosures about the subjects discussed in executive sessions and also holding executive sessions for reasons which are not permitted within the 10 permitted reasons for executive session. We mentioned that this is our fourth open meeting law complaint. If you, and that would be the public, have not heard anything about the first three complaints, we're not surprised, as the town and the town council and the public information and communications manager have very effectively hidden the complaints from the public view, which is also illegal. So how was the existence of the open meeting law complaints hidden from the public? Well, the complaints were not mentioned on Select Board agendas when discussed publicly at Select Board meetings and also not mentioned in the meeting minutes. This failure to mention a topic of discussion is also an open meeting law violation. The town's response to our three previous open meeting law complaints was, in our opinion, and in our lawyer's opinion, grossly inadequate. So in accordance with the open meeting law complaint procedure, we've asked the Massachusetts Attorney General to review the complaints. If you, and I mean taxpayers, are interested in reviewing our complaints, you have a right to obtain copies of the complaints. You can ask the town clerk in person at the townhouse or via email for copies of our complaints. If you ask the town clerk for copies of our open meeting law complaints, she will require that you identify which open meeting law complaint or complaints you wish to have copies of. Since the town has so effectively hidden all information about these complaints, it may be difficult for you to specify what complaint you're talking about. We recommend that you ask for any open meeting law complaints filed against the Select Board in the month of May 2019. You should receive a 66-page document in return. The complaint listed violations is quite short. The rest of the pages are the exhibits. Or in other words, the source documents providing the evidence, bringing the claim of multiple illegal activities by the Select Board. Thank you very much.
I see you have a prepared document there. Could we make a copy of it so that we can effectively add it in the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Have no miscellaneous correspondence, so we go next to committee nominations. So we have quite a few. So Susan, why don't you take the first one?
I move to nominate David Bell of 1657 Mining Street to the Public Ceremony and Celebrations Committee. Jeffrey Walton of 42 Buckmaster Drive to the West Concord Advisory Committee as an associate member. Pam Rockwell of 1810 Main Street. Paul Bone of 11 Ridgewood Road. Gary Kleiman of 57 Central Street. And Carl Sideman of 93 Wright Road to the Nuclear Metals Starment Property Reuse Planning Committee. Frank Cannon of 147 Prairie Street. Pat Nelson of 52 Cottage Lane. Matt Root of 139 Billnap Street. Don Guerello of 57 Bristers Hill Road. Chris Popoff of 35 Pleasant Street. Heather Belk of 33 Alden Road, School Committee Rep. And Court Booth of 144 Wright Road, School Committee Rep, to the Middle School Building Committee. And in addition, I want to nominate Timothy Holt of 20 South Meadow Ridge to the Middle School Building Committee. And I'd like to point out about that committee that there's another slot on the committee. We were very fortunate to receive a lot of.
We were very fortunate to receive a lot of green cards, a lot of people are interested in it, so that, that was welcome and we're still, we want to balance the presence of all the different contingencies on it and so we'll be appointing that.
So there's still one slot open?
There's still one slot open, right.
The issue was, in the charge, it was a certain number, a certain number of citizen representatives and we were careful putting that group together to have somebody with sustainability capabilities on that group, but it turns out that is listed as a separate member, so that allows us to do that. Were you also going to nominate Mr. Eng?
Yes, additional possible nominations, Steve Eng of 12 Dalton Road to the Nuclear Metals Starment Property Reuse Planning Committee. And Vince Carlson of 34 Everett Street to the PEG Access Advisory Committee.
I can just ask a question, since Steve is also the chair of the Public Works Commission, is that?
The, the issue is, which we will do at our meeting next on the third, is we will amend the charge of the Starment Committee before we go to appoint, to sort of call it a term committee, where, and that may not be the legal language of it, but a short-term term committee, where you can appoint people who serve on other committees if their expertise is important and necessary for the function. So, you know, Gary Kleiman, for example, his term ends on the planning board, having been, he would have fallen as a candidate. So, all right, so we don't need to vote on nominations, so we'll go to committee appointments.
I move to appoint Melissa Maxwell of 44 Ferris Mill Road to the Agricultural Committee, an expired term, associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2021. I move to appoint Robbie Vaia of 169 Thanefield Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals, associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. I move to appoint Superintendent Schools Dr. Woody Hunter, School Director of Finance and Operations Jared Stanton, Concord Middle School Principal Justin Cameron, and Concord Sustainability Director Kate Handley to the Middle School Building Committee. And I move to appoint Paul Grasso of 68 Southfield Road, the Conservation Committee, Recreation Commission representative, for a term to expire May 31st, 2021.
Okay. Before you second it, you want to, I don't think you said Carl Sideman.
Okay.
No.
That's because.
Because we're not going to do that.
Right, so Carl is.
Carl Sideman is going to be joining the Nuclear Metals.
All right, fine.
Reusing.
Okay, now, second, Terry.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Linda, would you do the last one here, so she can do the nomination herself?
Okay.
Well, we're not going to do that one, she's the magic representative, Jane is. So what was on there was the MACC Council, which is the big one, which is the town manager appointment. I spoke to, yeah, spoke to Dan this morning to clarify that.
All right, so committee reappoint.
Hold that one.
Committee reappoint.
Okay. I move to reappoint Deana Whitfield of 67 Witten Road to the Hugh Cargo Trust Committee for an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2020. And John Brady of 105 Lexington Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire July 31st, 2019. And he is continuing in that role because of APP 10, his expertise is needed to, for a matter that's before him at this point. And point Pam Rockwell of 1810 Main Street. Len Repole of 98 Shore Drive. Fred Seward of 158 Spencer Brook Road. And Deborah Farnsworth of 2132 Main Street as the Board of Health Representative. All of the previous people mentioned to the 229 Main Street Oversight Committee for terms to expire May 31st, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. And now town manager appointments for select board approval.
I move to confirm town manager appointments of Michael Capizzi of 11 Wood Street to the Historical Commission, full member for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Alan Bogosian of 1624 Main Street to the Historical Commission, associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2020. And Nick Papas of 300 Redding Road to the Natural Resources Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of election officers. We received a memo from the town clerk dated May 16th, there's some nice people to be appointed, so I would entertain motion.
I move to appoint the election officers as listed on the town clerk's memo dated May 16th, 2019.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. I would entertain motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.